Have you to stand with me, we'll say the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation, our government, indivisible, and the liberty and justice for all.
It's a roll call, all members present this evening along with Superintendent Glenn Conley and Reporting Secretary Jessica Harland. Our upcoming board meetings, March 14th, 2019 will be a public work session at the Administration Office at 6:00 PM. March 18th, 2019 will be a regular meeting at the high school, 6:00 PM. April 11th, 2019 will be another public work session at the Administration Office at 6:00 PM. April 15th, 2019 will be a regular meeting at Mentone, 6:00 PM. May 16th, 2019 will be a public work session at the Administration Office at 6:00 PM. And May 20th, 2019 will be a regular meeting at Akron Elementary at 6:00 PM. We'll move on to Spotlight on the Mountain, number one, welcome, introduction of new employees.
Thank you, Mr. Heckman. Our one employee is not here this evening in terms of being recognized, so we'd like to move on to number two, recognition of our world-class teacher, Kyler Kirby, and our pillar award for outstanding support staff, Lupe Quintana. So, Mr. Backus has some information here, and we'd like to present these folks.
Lupe, if you'd come up first. I'm gonna turn this on, I don't know if you need it to hear me, but, um, I'm gonna read off a little bit here on Lupe. Lupe came to us in 2016 from high school in order to take over the daytime custodial opening that we have available here. She's married to Jesus and has four children, Fernanda, Jesus, Emiliano, and Melanie, and they all attend Tippity Valley schools. In her time at TBMS, she's become a very reliable part of our team. She's always got a smile for people, she's quick to help out the staff and students, and she's a diligent worker and a trusted employee. During the fall, she stepped up and took over for our head custodian, who was on leave for a knee replacement and covered her time on the day shift. Um, we have a great custodial team, the board know that overall. Our building's well-maintained, it's always very presentable, and our crew has a lot of pride in what they do and it shows in this hidden gem of our community, so Lupe's a great fit for our staff team here at TBMS, and we're proud to recognize her as our Tippity Valley pillar award winner for outstanding support staff. Mr. Kirby. Kyler's in his fifth year at Tippity Valley Middle School, and he teaches pre-algebra and algebra for us currently. He came to us from Western Boone. Kyler's a Columbia City High School graduate and a Manchester University alum. He's married to Monica, and they recently had their first child, Paxton. Kyler's an outstanding teacher and coach for Tippity Valley. He coaches football in our middle school and is developing an increasingly successful wrestling program from the elementary all the way up through the middle school and high school. He's often here late in the evenings running his elementary feeder program. The passion Kyler has for developing his program is matched by the passion he has for seeing kids reach success in his classroom. He's helped our math team develop into a strong unit and seeing achievement increases yearly. Kyler was a close runner-up in our Teacher of the Year voting, and the following story I'm gonna share tells a little bit about him. Uh, we had a home football game this year. We have a young man on our football team with autism, and he allowed a long pass play over his head and just had a very severe meltdown. And, you know, as I'm watching this kid have his, you know, bad moment, I see Kyler running down the sideline, taking him by the shoulder, bringing him back to the sideline, and talking to this kid, and getting him calmed out, and getting him refocused. You know, that's just kind of the guy he is. Some of these kids that are in these situations wouldn't be able to play for somebody, you know, unless they have the compassion and care that Kyler does. So, you know, he's dedicated, his time, his talent, and it's hard to make kids at Tippity Valley successful on the map, on the field, and in the classroom. He truly is a world-class teacher and coach, and we're very proud to have him on our staff.
Thank you. We'd like to recognize, um, SRO, SRO, Rick Shepherd. And, uh, Rick, could you please stand? Rick is not a stranger to Tippity Valley. He graduated in 1986 from our high school. After high school, he received an Associate's Applied Science degree, played basketball for Joliet Junior College in Illinois, and he joined the Cosgazco County Sheriff's Department in 2002, working first as a confinement officer in the county jail. Through his years at the Sheriff's Department, he was promoted to the Patrol Division into the ranks of Corporal, Sergeant, and Lieutenant. SRO Shepherd has two grown children, Braden Barber, he's 27, he's in Columbia City, he's a police officer. Cameron Shepherd, 24, Whitley County Corrections Officer. So, it's a family business, so, there you go. Well, we just want you to know how much we appreciate having you come back to Valley, and I know our administrators and our staff are proud to have you back and everything that you're doing to build relationships with our kids. Uh, Mr. Backus, would you like to start your portion?
Well, we get once a year to celebrate what we do at our school, and so I was trying to take a little bit of time here and put together some information for you guys. There we go. Just about the great things that are going on at Tippity Valley Middle School, so bear with me a little bit here. Uh, we've got a lot of things we want to talk about, but like I said, this is our one chance here to really showcase to you guys what these people sitting here do for our kids every day. So, we're gonna focus on the mission. So, we're gonna start off talking about what we do here to develop the character in our kids, and we do PBIS. Uh, we have a drawing every week for kids. If you, when we take our tour later, tour members, we go around the corner, you can see the cabinet we have in the hallway where we just have prizes for kids that they earn from the drawings from PBIS. We sold Viking cards to help raise money for our field trips and our school. All the kids in the picture with the limo are the top sellers, I get to go have lunch or ride in a limo for lunch at McDonald's, um, or Viking Way. We put out Staff Member of the Week every week around, just celebrating teachers, we're celebrating everybody. So, cooks, custodians, paraprofessionals, everybody on our staff, and try to recognize through that program. Early in the year, we had Nathan Harmon from Your Life Speaks come and speak to us here, uh, and he also talked to the high school. Talked about making positive choices, give an anti-bullying message, talked about handling peer pressure, mental health, overcoming adversity, and most importantly, the basis of this conversation was making good choices. And that's something that we try to work with our kids all the time about. Um, every morning after we do a moment of silence and pledge allegiance, and a few catch-up announcements if we need to, we wrap up morning announcements with a piece from Project Wisdom. These are all about good character choices, they're all about making good decisions, being respectful of other people, so we do the reading, wrap up the announcements, and get on with our day. Community outreach is huge. Our school does a ton of thanks to help our community. This is just a small list of things we've done this year. Unified Game Day and Unified Band School, which I'll get to a little later on. Michelle Martinez is our Keys representative, so she works with Cosgazco Authorization Youth Services. Uh, we had Green and Purple Day that our kids organized for Selena and Maverick after the bus accident. Uh, Weekly Helping Hands Support, this has stopped a little bit because of the weather, but every week Kathy Olson's class is taking a couple of kids out to help Helping Hands get set up for their weekly food distribution. So, we've got a connection with them. Uh, Brandon O'Nay Calling Week, we've got a Boos It Up Lunch coming up. Eric and Tree Event happens here in our school, and our student council helps with that event. Uh, we raised money for Gunner Crispin to buy glasses. Gunner's a blind student, he was able to buy glasses to help him see. We raised enough money here and helped out enough that he was able to turn around and buy a pair of glasses for another kid in their, their parent group that they're with based on the fundraiser. We just wrapped up Penny's Pre-Patriots last week, Mr. Williams got to kiss the bidding on Friday. Um, last year, our staff raised over $1,000 for Riley. New College Code Week, we run our Viking Viddle's food program. Um, that's, Mrs. Early was our Teacher of the Year, came up with this, and you guys have heard just what we do with that, but it's still going every week, so.
Scott, what's the Mix It Up Lunch?
Mix It Up Lunch, basically, we run a sixth-up and eighth-grade lunch period here, so on the Mix It Up Lunch Day, we take a third of the sixth graders, a third of the seventh graders, a third of the eighth graders, and they go through the lunch line, and they came out, they come out, they do good cards or stickers, they have to go sit at that table, blend it up with other sixth-up and eighth graders, and then the high school peers come over, and while the kids are eating, they just have fun activities with them, get to know new games. So, it's a chance for kids to sit with other people, learn who other people are, and we've done this the last two years. We had it planned already, weather has bumped it down, but it's scheduled for March 1st coming up. Mary and Jerry's Helping Hands, we held every year Thanksgiving, we do a food drive, and then our kids go out and help them. This year, our kids were also able to go out and help during the Christmas distribution. The other thing that we do here that, uh, Mrs. Thomas and Mrs. Martin, who's longer with us here at Valley, but they started a Veterans Day program a few years ago, and if you haven't had a chance to be here and see it, it's awesome. Our choir sings, our band plays, community members are invited, we've had a big turnout with veterans coming to watch. It's a really fantastic showcase for our school and a good community connection. On Martin Luther King Junior Day, the eighth grader was able to go to Grace Collins and listen to Chris Singleton talk. Chris is a Cubs minor league baseball player whose mom was killed in a church shooting. So, he talks about overcoming that. Again, good choices, how to lead a positive life, how to forgive people, so good, good character discussion for our kids. Uh, this is something we're really proud of. Uh, this just went up a couple of weeks ago. We were able to raise $500 through the dance, and we're gonna become a Champions Together Unified Middle School. So, we're waiting on the official banner that we're going to Jim, but we're joining the high school in, uh, Special Olympics support, and we're proud to have the sign-up in here, and we'd be proud to get the banner in the gym coming up. So, we also work really hard for the middle school to develop leadership. Leadership comes from a number of different things, but I believe very strongly it comes from athletics, opportunities to step up and do things above and beyond the league. So, our spell bowl team won the RRC this year. Sorry, that didn't come out very clear, but we won nine in the last 10 years. They're a strong group. We ended up 19th in the state in the last three this year at the IASB Spell Bowl, but didn't qualify us to go back to the state championships, but we're waiting on three more banners to get done for winning edge to hang up here for the five trips that our kids have made in the state finals in the spell bowl. So, really proud of the work they've done there. Script spelling bees, the individual spelling bee. Kate Cornet was our champion and went on to represent us at, uh, Cosgazco County. Michelle Martinez was runner-up. AIA Marius Brito, Colton Crouch, Shirley Hodge, and the whole scene were all finals, so really proud of our kids. They had to take the list, go study on their own, and then go through the spelling bee and make it there. Last spring's class of Honor Society kids, Honor Society's a great way for folks to step up and be leaders. Mr. Williamson this year put on a play for our middle school kids. So, a bunch of middle school kids, they ride the bus over to the high school after school and practice, and they put on play Law or Fairytale Unit right about Thanksgiving time. Did a really fantastic job with that. So, starting to develop some drama skills in the kids at the middle school for his play at the high school. We've got 92 kids in choir this year at the middle school in three grade levels. Um, a group of them just participated two weekends ago at Huntingwell Center in the circle of the state. A song, that's a really awesome performance. They sang the hymns of every one of the branches of alarm services during our Veterans Day program, did an awesome job there. It's a good group. Ms. Ryan's got 91 students in the band this year. Um, they perform a winter spring concert, they performed at the Veterans Day Program as well. Um, not sure if IPFW Honor Band was part of this year, but I know we've done that several times in the past. And then solo ensemble contest, McKenna Smith, AIA Marius Brito, Jordan Schubaker, all were gold. Lauren Rich had a perfect score for gold, so, um, they do an outstanding job. Ms. Ryan does an awesome job. And actually, Mr. Cooper, I don't know if it's Ryan or just asked her nicely, but, uh, our eighth grade band actually played in our last girls' basketball game here, so that was a first as far as I can remember in my 20 years of being here, and it was really exciting for the kids to have the band play while they were playing the basketball game, so excited about that. Just running through sports real quick, football teams this year, seventh grade was 6-1, they were co-champions of RRC, seventh grade went undefeated, won the conference. Uh, cross-country, team-wise wasn't super strong, but had some really good individual performances. Chesney Miller won every race she ran in except two. She finished the RRC in second place, and she was fifth at the New Haven meet. If you know anything about the New Haven meet, it's like 70 schools, so it's a big deal. Volleyball, we were south through the turning runner-up in seventh and eighth grade both, and then our eighth grade made the final four of RRC. Boys basketball, the sixth grade boys, uh, won the Milford Tournament this year. Unfortunately, weather canceled their Valley Tournament. Um, the eighth grade boys won our Valley Tournament, and then just a couple of weekends ago, they won the, the Conference. So, they were the RRC champs. Um, they had a really outstanding season, and that'll be a great group of basketball players moving up through ours. Girls' basketball, the seventh grade girls were our Valley turning runner-up. Eighth grade girls won the Valley turning. Our eighth grade girls were RRC champs as seventh graders last year, and their tournament starts tomorrow night for this season. So, that eighth grade group of girls is a strong group of basketball players as well.
Scott, do they play here or are they on?
They're at Peru tomorrow night. If they win, they play out Law Bash on Saturday. They're fine, so. We talked a little bit about Mr. Kirby a little while ago, but last year, uh, at the end of wrestling season, um, our middle school wrestling team ended up conference runner-up, and it was really close, wasn't it? Like, one match. So, you know, we've, we've got numbers, we've got kids wrestling well, and two of the guys on this team made it to semi-state this year with the high school level as freshmen, so definitely some promise in the future with those guys coming up. Cheer squad, had a bunch of girls cheering this year. Mrs. Thomas coached during the football season, Mrs. Miller, and St. Amy Lerner during basketball. Last year in the spring, uh, we had our first soccer season, middle school ever, and the combined co-ed team went and beat 1-1. First year out of the gate. We had over 30 kids participate. Uh, we expect to have at least that many in this year, if not more. So, um, hopefully this is gonna feed into Mr. Moose's program and help the high school soccer team be stronger. Uh, there's some really pretty talented kids out there playing, and it's time to give them the opportunity to be there and play. Golf, Karen Parker coached our golf team last year. They play at the Waldo, um, down on 15 for the home matches. And then at Target Field, the eighth grade boys last year were conference champs in the RRC meet at the end of the year. Big wage, chugging a shot up there, so has some success. Last thing I want to talk about is literacy. So, we talked about building character here, building leadership. This is probably the one thing that we're most proud of right now at the middle school, and that's R and R Tuesday. So, we sat down early in the year and said, alright, we don't have enough time to get everything in, we want to get in for collaboration. We're struggling to get time for kids to read, and we're struggling to be able to pull kids to remediate, so what can we do? And the leadership team sat down and put together ideas and ran them back and forth, and what we came up with is this idea of R and R Tuesdays. So, we run a homeroom called Advisory Day. What we decided was to move that to first period for everybody, and when we walk in the door Tuesday morning, the kids go get a book, they read for the first hour of the day. If they need remediation, half the teachers, week one, half the teachers, week two, they all are named, so one week you pull kids to do extra schoolwork or mediate, the other week you're just supervising everybody reading. And Mr. Cooper and, uh, Ms. Stiles and I take the extra overflow kids as necessary and cover them. But, reading for a solid 52 minutes to begin that day, teachers are pulling small groups of kids to work on skill deficits, and one team, one department, a week is meeting with Mrs. Revere from 7:20 to 9 o'clock doing a 90 or 100-minute block of professional development. So, we're getting all that done every Tuesday morning. Fortunately, we've had two-hour delays and cancellations in the last two, but, um, sorry. Yeah. But, this has been a really powerful thing to allow us to increase time in books and also allow our teachers to work in small groups with our kids. The last time we had this, I didn't have to watch any kids, and I walked up and down the hallways, and the remediation groups, when you look in the window, a teacher is sitting in a circle with seven, eight kids, and they're just talking about stuff they need to do to get better, it's powerful. So, we really are proud of this and hope that it continues to be beneficial for us. Our advisory period is a homeroom time. The kids have the same teacher all year, unless they're in related arts, and they rotate every 12 weeks. But, to set goals, the progress monitor, they check the catch-up cafe list, make sure the work's done, and we do grade checks, this is the group we do parent-teacher conferences with, and then embedded in advisories are graduate groups. So, we, we probably have approximately 30 kids that we've designated into the graduate program, and they're grouped in small groups. They're kids that generally have high needs and might be a graduation risk, and so they do goal-setting progress monitoring, kind of a little more intensively with those teachers. And then they're also doing our philanthropy. The sixth grade group, graduate kids, are packing Viking Viddle's bags for us every week, so they're a part of that program. We've gone to Feed My Starving Children, what was the, what did we, not this year, but in years past?
Bags for the NCCAA.
Okay, yeah. They went up and packed the bags for the Grace Collins Basketball Tournament, uh, but we tried to give them an opportunity to go do some, um, community service work for this program too. Mrs. Olson, been at Mentone for a long time and, um, moved out to the middle school this year to help us with the group of kids in applied skills, and it's a fantastic program. You're gonna hear a little bit later on today about Patchful Meadows, but Kathy's done a great job of not only working with the kids at the right levels and helping them grow, but also doing tons of blended learning opportunities. So, these kids are getting to cook, they're getting to go out in the community and do things, just learn life skills. Uh, last week, I got to eat pizza and dirt pudding that these guys and the Mentone preschool kids, uh, got together and cooked for our staff. So, just lots of really neat learning experiences for the unique needs of these kids, and it's been a really powerful experience for them. At the middle school right now, for eighth graders, we're offering potentially five high school course credits this year. So, on the flip side, looking at our advanced kids, kids that are taking the adro with Mr. Kirby right now can earn two credits towards their high school diploma. Kids that are taking biology with Ms. Huff can earn two credits in biology. And then every eighth grader has the opportunity to take Parents for Colleges of Careers, they're taking that Mrs. Kimble's class right now, that class will actually end this Friday, and they're earning college credit in pathways area by doing that PCC class here in eighth grade. So, if they take care of business in that class, every eighth grader that walks out of here is gonna at least have one credit in their credits bucket for graduation, so we're excited about that, but there's some wavering in the state about whether they're gonna let us keep that at the eighth grade, or bump it back to ninth grade, but as long as we can have, we're gonna keep doing that here for the kids. Clear that for the right visit out before they go to try to work through those college pathways. We've had a ton of off-site learning experiences this year. Uh, seventh graders went to Mary Lee, which is a geological center up by Albion, spent Rock Cycle. We've planned and canceled and planned and canceled the trip to the Junior Chief of Finance Park in Warsaw for our eighth graders. Tentatively, we're looking at dates in April now to be able to possibly make it up, but, um, it's just a big economic stretch, so the kids learn about credit, checkbooks, life living in a checkbook, and they go to this facility and basically walk through all these different areas where they have to pay taxes, buy a house, pay for kids, pay for doctors, so all that, and then they just really kind of learn what it's like to actually have an income, have to pay bills, and see what's left at the end of the month. The Ortho Works set up an ortho tour in October, which is manufacturing month, and we went to Warsaw Area Career Center, Ortho Training Center, and orthopedic, a couple orthopedic companies in Warsaw on that tour. So, all of our eighth graders, all of our eighth graders got to go and, and kind of see what the orthopedic businesses have to offer, what kind of training opportunities we can provide them so that they can get into those businesses, because a lot of those businesses are needing skilled labor right now. And then, um, our sixth graders went to see play Danny at the Round Barn Theater at Mama Shakers, and then sixth grade now, I think three years in a row, has gone to Wagonville right before Christmas for a play. It's part of a grant, uh, in Fulton County, or in Cosgazco County that's been put out, so we've taken advantage of that over the last three years to be able to go see a play at the library, which is a lot of fun for them to be out in those days. Our district's invested a lot in professional learning communities, and I'm not gonna belabor this much, but it's a critical process for us. Our growth is because we're doing this, and we're gonna keep getting better by keeping that cycle of doing this going. So, training people in the summer is critical, those that haven't been trained, continuing to just work through, you know, looking basically at this pathway, and I shared this with you guys a couple of board meetings ago, but this is what we do, this is our action plan. We, we look at the curriculum that we need to teach, we assess it, we figure out what the data's telling us, and we figure out what we've got to do with kids based on what they showed on that assessment. If they're not getting it, we're gonna use that R and R time in advisory to remediate them. If they are, we want to continue to push them so that we're moving them forward, but it's just a continuous cycle of looking at our curriculum, looking at our data, and making adjustments to what we do. Our improvement areas right now, we, we're a B for the first time in the history of the school, so we're super excited about that, but we want to get to the A. That, that's why our goals were set where they are. So, we know these are areas of improvement that we want to focus on right now, English Language Arts proficiencies, 58.8%, we want to get to 7, and we're, we're building, we're working there. So, our time for reading and remediation and professional development's gonna help us, but this is also an adoption year for Language Arts, and so this is a critical time for us to look at what we need for the next six years, what's gonna fit with our middle school philosophy and how we can support our Language Arts teachers moving forward and help them be successful in the classroom with kids. Our other area, we want to sustain our high-growth score and our mathematics performance gains. Our growth performance is over 100%, we want to stay there because that means we're moving kids a year's worth of growth across the board. Math has seen some great gains, we want to stay there, we want to keep growing kids in that area. So, advisory period for student supports, R and R time, Alex Math, we have a Title I math focus with Ms. May, Kara, who helps with math support there. Uh, Mrs. Revere is huge to what we do here at the school. She helps with professional development, she helps us design curriculum, and there's some days she just helps with people that are breaking down in the classroom and need help. She's awesome, and she's one of the reasons why we're moving where we're moving as well. So, our goals for this next three-year cycle, we want to move English Language Arts to 70%, we want to move math from 62.9 to 70%, and we want to stay where we're at with growth. We want to be over 100 points with combined growth rate every year. We want to be over 100 points with combined growth rate every year. Any questions? There's tons of stuff that I probably didn't share and there's probably stuff that these guys out here are thinking, why didn't you put this in there? Because there's great stuff going on in this building every day. I'm super proud of our staff, from teachers to parents to coaches, custodians to our coaching staff. Everybody here is doing great things and it's exciting to be in a building where people are rolling about in the same direction, so. Any questions?
Great job, Scott. Great job with your staff. Just waving. It's very eye-opening to what everything's going on here, not seeing it, knowing that it's, I haven't been able to see it once a year, but I'm glad that I was able to say thank you and anything, round of applause.
I do presentations, they do all the work. This is all man.
Great job, guys. Thank you. Number six, student reports. Dylan.
Okay, well, swimming did really well at section one. And then last Sunday, we went laser tag and went to church in FFA and that was a really fun experience. And then FFA Weeks this week and Friday with the teacher with the most money in their bucket, asked the kids to create their, so it was pretty funny. And then tomorrow, we go and reach the second graders at Akron and Mentone, both schools. And then Friday's Track to Drive-In Day and that ends FFA Week then. And then robotics as their competition on this Saturday. So that was really cool.
Dylan, didn't you help raise money for something this weekend?
Oh yeah, I did a pool of lunch this weekend.
Wow. Where?
Up there at Warsaw Center League.
Okay. Awesome. What time's the dinner this week for the FFA?
Oh, we have our appreciation supper Wednesday night and I don't really know, about six or seven.
Okay, and what's the critter? Do we know what the critter is? It's like they, okay. I'm just curious. Good job, thank you.
Friday is the last home boys basketball game and it's also senior night. And track started last week and we have our first indoor meet, March 2nd at PFW. And then next week is Riley Week and it's sort of like a second homecoming week, so we have themes every day. And the themes this year are PJ Day, Retro Day, nerd, athlete and then red. And we will have a dance Saturday, March 2nd to raise money for Riley. And if you raise $2,000, then Mr. Piper and Mr. Prescott have to wear those blow-up sumo wrestler costumes and wrestle and run in the whole school.
Alright, so who do we want to contribute money to?
Yeah.
So they're very good at this. Yeah. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. That's everything for Spotlight.